Minutes?
You're live.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome, everybody, tonight to the regular session of the Pecosin Planning Commission from Monday, December 4th. We'll call it to order, call the meeting to order, and with that, we will open with invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. And if you would like to stand in joint, you're welcome to do so. We'll be saying the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is famous, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. We had a work session on October 16th. And do I have a motion to accept the minutes for that work session?
Make the motion to accept the minutes from the October's. Is it, have I got it right? October, October 16th?
Yes, sir.
That's a long time ago.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
With that, we'll take a vote.
All right. Commissioner Hirsch?
Absent.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Schott?
Aye.
Chairman Shriver?
Aye.
The work, the minutes passed.
Thank you. And the next thing we have is the minutes for the regular session on that same night, October 16th, 2023. Do I have a motion to accept those as written?
I will state that there is a small amendment. I misspelled a name. There will be a small amendment to it.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept with that small amendment?
I will make the motion to accept the minutes of October the 16th, regular session with the amendment.
Second?
Second.
And we'll take the vote.
Commissioner Geisinger? Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Schott?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
The regular minutes passed.
Move on to the audience for visitors. This is a time when you can come to speak to the Planning Commission about a matter other than the public hearing items. Any public hearing item just holds you peaceful a little bit on that because we'll give you an opportunity to speak during the public hearing. But if you would like to tell us about something that is not related to the public hearing, we'll welcome your comments at this time. If you come to the podium to speak, please say your name and address. Do we have anyone that would like to come up and speak? Now, this is not about, at this time, you won't be able to speak about the public hearing item again, then this is the tourist home, which some of you may be here to speak about. We will hear that during the public hearing. The audience for visitors. Okay. With that said, it looks like nobody wants to speak in the audience for visitors, so we will go ahead and close that, and we will move on to the public hearing item. It's a request for a conditional use permit by Bodie Hummel for the operation of a tourist home to be located at 262 Hunts Neck Road, tax map parcel 11-02-00-0008. Approximately .88 acres, zoned RS, single-family residence. And we probably have a presentation on that by Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, the application before you is just read by the chairwoman. It's for a tourist home at 262 Hunts Neck Road. I have a brief presentation I'll share with you. Feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions. Applicant is Bodie Hummel. He's the owner of the home, him and his wife, and for a tourist home. And you'll see the definition here, per the city code, a dwelling in which overnight accommodations are provided or offered for three or more transient guests. It's not a permitted use in any zoning district in the city. Some of you were on the Planning Commission when we, when you all considered one on West Creek Road, I believe, at the end of last year. So this is the second tourist home CUP application that some of you have seen. Legal notice was published, and adjacent letters were sent according to code. And per the application, I'll read this to you. This is directly from the applicant. His desire is to utilize the additional living quarters on the property as a rental using an app to pay all taxes and manage all finances related to the rental of the space. The space will only be rented while my family is on site. Since this is our home, we will allow access to our dock and side yard to guest. They, being the guests, will utilize our trash can that's located in front of our garage and parked northwest of our garage. The guests will only access our property by our private drive that bisects our property. My wife will manage and vet all guests through the app. We will offer the space for four, to allow a family with two kids, but she will discourage more than two adults from staying. The property will be maintained and cleaned by my wife and I. This is the proposed site. This is a zoomed out snapshot of the aerial, but it is 262 Hunts Neck Road. It's off of Barber Lane. You'll see the line there. Yellow is Hunts Neck Road before you get to the turn there at Edwards. And the orange is, of course, the Barber Lane, which is a private road. It is zoned RS, single-family residence. This is the zoomed in version. Walk you through this so you can understand more clearly what I'm trying to show you. To the left of the property line, the blue line, is the extension of Barber Lane. But you can see down at the bottom corner, it turns right to Morehouses off of Barber, and that yellow rectangle, that is the driveway to the Hummels' home that they reference in the application for how their guests will access their property. The building in the orange, I'll call it a rectangle there at the north of the property, that is the accessory, the additional living space that they reference. It's a mother-in-law suite above a garage. We discussed reference in the work session.
Hey, Thomas?
Yes?
I'm sorry. I am having a hard time really seeing it. Is the garage and mother-in-law suite attached to the house?
It is. It is attached.
Oh, it's just attached?
It's attached to the home.
Oh, I thought it was...
It is attached to the home. Actually, I was seeing if I could zoom in, but you can kind of see there between the orange rectangle and a portion of the home, the connection. In any event, the blue square that I've added to the left of the orange one where the additional living space is, that's the proposed parking area. That's referenced in the application. In working with the applicant, we have devised these conditions. The first is that the business shall be subject to all applicable taxes as determined by the commissioner of revenue. There's a lot of new state language and new city language that references taxes for transient occupancy. So obviously, they will be assessed as determined by the commissioner. At no such time shall more than four persons occupy the portion of the property subject to the application, which will function as the tourist home. That's doing two things. It's limiting it to four persons and making clear that this application is for the subject, for that excess, that additional living area, that mother-in-law suite. It won't be interpreted that this was for the whole home at any point. The use shall not be in operation unless the property owner or owners are on site. So either Mr. or Mrs. Hummel would have to be present at the home when the additional space is being rented. All renters shall use the driveway indicated on the submitted plat and in the staff PowerPoint as presented to access the rental. That's the driveway that's shown on the plat in the application. You have it in your packet. And the driveway, as indicated by that yellow rectangle I showed you in the aerial image, if you look at the plat, it literally says "drive," and it bisects the entire portion of the property, entire portion of the lot. Parking for the use shall be accommodated for onsite in a paved driveway or in their parking areas approved by community development staff. That was the section in blue. And parking spaces shall be provided at a rate of one per unit, one per bedroom. They will be required to have two in that case. And then the conditions you see with all of these applications, it must comply with local, state, federal permits, licenses, and regulations. Of course, any violation, the city council may revoke the permit. If at any time the use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void, and city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. In addition to the materials I provided to you in the presentation, excuse me, I was provided some letters from the applicant on Friday, one being some speaking, some talking points from him, but he is present. That's on, that's the handwritten page at your places and in the email. And of course, accompanying that was, I'll say, some letters of approval or maybe recommendation for your approval attached. Today, I received some letters in opposition to the application. I emailed those to you all after I received them, and that packet looks like this and is also at your desk. If you have any questions for me, I am happy to answer them. I won't speculate on the area itself or the operation thereof. I'll let the applicant do that, but if I can answer your question, I certainly will.
I have a question, Thomas. I'm looking at this plat, and I may be misreading this, but it looks to me like the garage is that structure here that the driveway leads directly into?
Yeah.
So is there a detached garage on the property as well?
That is the structure in question, but it is attached. The plat does not show it attached accurately, but it is attached to the home. Yes, ma'am.
Thomas, did we, did we put, the reason I'm looking at this, of course, is not really defined short term in this. And didn't we define that with the other one that we approved next to 711?
What we have done, and I can show you, we've used this definition, this tourist home definition, because that's what we have in the code. We will adopt the definition of short-term rental consistent with the state definition, but that's wrapped in with a lot of the zoning updates that we haven't taken the council yet. That's why we're still using the tourist home definition. But this is used, if it's less than 30 days, per state code, which we operate under regardless, that is, by their definition, a short-term rental. If it's something that's rented for more than 30 days, it's just like any other home rental, and, you know, the use and tax implications of that would fall in that category rather than transient occupancy.
Clarify for me how the garage is attached to the structure, what means...
I'll call it a trellis, maybe an appropriate term.
Open?
It's open.
So it's not living area attached to that?
It's not attached by living area.
Okay.
No, but it is by definition attached to the home.
A piece of wood?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, a walkway or something.
Right. It's a walkway and attached by what I'll call a trellis. If that's a, if you, that's, I think, the accurate description.
Thomas, in the application, it cites that, was this an existing Airbnb that was being run?
Yes. So this has been in operation, I'll say, for a couple of years, maybe a tad longer, and really came in before, you know, this started to become more popular in the city. They've had a business permit, and as you all know how we operate generally and in these situations, especially the Airbnbs or any short-term rental, is that we operate under, we are complaint-driven. When a complaint's received and/or an applicant or operator makes conscious, I'll say, application with the city to permit it correctly is then when we start this process. So they have been in operation, but now they have applied for a CUP properly.
Is that because a complaint has come in, and that's why it's come forward?
There was, but I would say the two really coincided, where the applicant submitted, made application, and a few complaints otherwise.
It previously was not allowed, but it was being operated?
It was oper, it was operational. It has been operational.
Was it compliant with the law at the time, when it was being used as an Airbnb?
I would say not necessarily, in that it's not a permitted use, but how we, the city, quite frankly, per council direction to staff, it always has been complaint-driven. So unless someone is operating in a manner that drives complaints from other businesses or from adjacents or neighbors, then we don't enforce, I'll say, proactively.
There's still a policy, existing policy?
Still, that's how we currently operate. And, you know, the overarching conversation here is the short-term rental discussion we've been having with you all for more than a year. We've been waiting, waiting on the language from the state, and then the state has another study group over the summer, or a bill dies in the last week of session, and the localities are left with a lot of questions. But we're getting much closer. We are ready for council to adopt at least the definition of short-term rental. I have prepared a short-term rental application that once council adopts the definition, will start to use in these situations. But unless the state tells us otherwise, we will, or direction is given to us otherwise, any short-term rental will be permitted only by CUP.
There's no criteria for that?
We don't have any criteria as of now. No, here are the guidelines, here are the, here's the checklist for your short-term rental.
Like we have looked at tonight. I mean, there's no specific...
Right. You know, we do, I have some guidance in that application that will eventually be used in these situations. But, you know, one thing about these, about short-term rentals generally, is that every application is different. There's not going to be a consistent, the same short-term rental, the same use anywhere in any locality. So it really is a moving target. We will have basic guidelines, like parking area and maybe some kind of occupancy max, but other than that, it will really be, some of these conditions will be really tailored to the application.
So, Thomas, I have two points of question clarification. So right now, there are no official, what are we calling them? Sorry, I always, rentals in residential areas.
There is not, because, as you correctly reference, the one on West Creek Road that was approved by council is in the B2 district. You know, the extension of the district encompasses that lot and the lot beside it, which have always been residential structures, but the underlying zoning is B2.
And then my follow-up question is, in looking at this whole packet and researching this issue, I've noticed, for example, our neighboring county, for York County, they have zoning ordinances excerpts, so they go through definitions, they go through standards for boarding houses, short-term rentals. So at this time, we do not have any of this for the city of Pecosin. It's not in our zoning ordinances.
We do not.
We do not, and largely because the state has not decided on what conditions we'll be able to actually make on these things in the final analysis. And I believe, and I don't want to speak to York County, but I believe York County might be revisiting some of those very same criteria as we speak.
A lot of jurisdictions have been revisiting short-term rentals, and the city of Hampton has had extensive revisiting of it. They have actually tabled it until the new year, not allowing any applications to go through.
Right.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have zoomed in a bit here. You can see better the structure that connects the two. But the conversation you're having is accurate. Like I say, it's a moving target at best. The state doesn't, isn't exactly sure the best procedure to regulate the uses, and the localities are trying to get a handle on it themselves. Obviously, our neighbors are being inundated with these uses and applications, whereas we are not at such a level. I will tell you, it's becoming much more frequent monthly in this city where we get calls about short-term rentals, whether it be persons who wish to purchase a home for the use, or current operators, or persons making complaints. So it's a new thing, and we are trying, we are hoping that in January, the General Assembly will have some language that helps us.
The letters of opposition are from 247, 248, and 249 of this, of Hunts Neck Road.
Right.
So where is that adjacent? Because you were just zoomed in, and that was super helpful because I was able to see where these properties are.
Right. So I was prepared for that question and had our GIS pulled up. I will show you exactly where they are, if the system will cooperate with me.
Thomas, this is sort of like a question of, it's not illegal as of what we have today, but it's really more about the neighboring people, and we're going to be listening to them tonight, correct? So there is nothing that legally we can say, oh, you can't do this, but...
It is, it is an unpermitted use.
I'm sorry, you're right. That's why we're getting a conditional use permit.
Correct. It is an unpermitted use, because tourist home, short-term rental, none, they're not permitted by right in any zoning district in the city. And Commissioner Schott, the property highlighted is 247. The property, I'll say, to its east and north of the subject property is 248, and then the one at the top of the screen is 249. This is 249. This is 247, and this is 248.
And where is, and 262 is right there?
This is the...
Okay, so this is, this is the adjacent property owners that have brought, written in opposition?
Two direct adjacent, correct.
Before we get too deep into discussion, I would like to open the public hearing, and then we can really, you know, we can hear particularly who have sent the letter, and then we can relative to that more discussion, and we can ask Thomas questions, because, you know, get into that after the public hearing. So at this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter, and if you do have something you would like to add to this conversation, please feel welcome at the podium, give your name and address when you come up. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hello, I'm Ariel Hummel. I am the property owner at 262 Hunts Neck, here in Charming, Pecosin. I'd like to start off expressing my gratitude for having us and hearing us out. We feel very welcome in the city. I am active in the art community, and my husband is active in research and development of aviation. We really enjoy the Christian fellowship. We are pleased with my son's second year here at Trinity Christian as well. We really appreciate the water life, fishing, and bird watching. I'd also like to say I'm shocked to be here in front of you, asking for permission for my likelihood to be in jeopardy. My husband is in the Army, and when offered a job here, we thoroughly researched from Williamsburg to Surrey to Foster for over a year prior to choosing this community and home. Then we ultimately chose Pecosin as our forever home, a place we can raise our sign of mercy to nature as our backyard in this smaller, yet growing city. We purchased our home sight unseen with diligent research. This was during the bidding wars of 2021 and COVID. It wasn't an easy time to move. Three highlights Pecosin offered was allowing us to bring our chickens, the school rating, and allowing a short-term rental. After many calls and emails between my realtor, Lee Barefoot, and the, I'm unsure what his title is, but Ken Somerset, I was told we were approved for a short-term rental under simple, clear, specific conditions. I was granted a business license for short-term rental at 262 Hunts Neck, and even had it renewed a second time recently. The set rules I have abided by as in a four-person family occupancy at max, two parking spaces on our property, and to always be present at the property when guests are occupying it. I have now had a successful, quiet, private business for nearly two full years under these set conditions. My husband travels often, and since he first joined the service, I have selected homes with guest quarters and in-law suite due to his absence. Having a guest room is my way to supplement our income. Everyone that loves us lives on the West Coast and tries to visit often. My mother has unexpectedly fallen ill. My sister and I take turns caring for her in the past three years. She is with us often. She just left. She will be back soon again. So the guest room is never utilized year-round. In fact, I only open up the calendar when I don't have Saturday markets or art festivals on the weekends. I prefer to only have it open when my husband is away. I feel safer. It keeps me busy, and we aren't working on remodeling our own home when he is away. So it's a nice time to have occupancy. My son and I both have physical disabilities. We have never applied for government assistance nor help. We just work hard to ensure my son's needs are met. I am able to contribute to our income while being a stay-at-home caretaker. I switched from other short-term rental app services to Airbnb because their safety precautions have improved recently and vastly. The vetting process is amazing. It's user-friendly and caters to my son's school schedule for when I can clean, check-ins, and check-outs. I offer a day in between each guest as well. Majority of our guests are immediate family of this citizen's residents. We have all five-star ratings on every single app and have never had a guest complaint because I'm accessible 24/7. We are proud homeowners. We work hard to enhance the value of our home and neighborhood. My husband and I have more than doubled the value of three different homes in our 15 years of marriage. Although my husband is a busy soldier, he has extreme talent and is gifted at doing everything extremely well. Our last home was a farm in Kentucky that we were able to build, a thriving short-term rental business. We enhanced its value from $300,000 to $650,000. We have done many major upgrades to our current forever home, including remodeling the guest room, updating the energy efficient appliances, cleaning up the debris, replacing windows, new roof, removing carpet and tiles. We, well, my husband, is currently installing hardwood flooring ourselves. Most of our neighbors have whole work crews who come and go daily, weekly, doing the maintenance that we quietly do ourselves. We do not have any traffic. We hosted a couple neighborhood fires with kid activities. I do occasionally host the Yorktown Arts Foundation members as their volunteer coordinator, and next month, we'll be hosting the Pecosin Art League for an art demonstration. I've been a proud member of them for the past two years. Ultimately, I would appreciate being able to support my family, living a peaceful life, creating art, and being home with my son while he is young. Happy holidays and best wishes. Thank you. Actually, do you guys have anything to ask me of all that I just said?
If we do, we can certainly, certainly do that. At some point, we may ask you to come back.
Please do.
If you don't mind.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for this opportunity for me to come and present my case. I have two letters, which I think you've seen there.
That's your name. Sorry, your address. That's okay.
Paul Hammond. I live at 248 Hunts Neck Road, which is right next door. You can see it, I don't know if it's north or west, but the other side of that blue line, that's where I live, right there. Excuse me. So thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to first read the letter that the other tenant, sorry, not the other tenant, the other... other residents of Huntsknecht Road have signed. Williams, excuse me, "We, the undersigned residents of Huntsknecht Road, object to the proposed application for 262 Huntsknecht Road to be approved for a tourist home. The undersigned residents reside in Roberts Creek on a small peninsula with limited road access to our properties, and our homes are very close to each other and to 262 Huntsknecht Road. Our security and privacy relies very much on the cooperation and agreement of all residents in this small area. We do not believe that the residents of 262 Huntsknecht Road are considering the welfare and security of the other residents of this small peninsula in applying for a tourist home to be operated on their home. If permission is granted to allow a tourist home or Airbnb at 266 Huntsknecht Road, our residential area will become a commercial area, and we did not sign up for this. If this application is approved, it will be the start of the destruction of the present wonderful character that Pecosa is unique for. Mr. Hummel has been operating an Airbnb from his residential property and home for, we think, about six months now and is still doing so. If permission is granted to allow a tourist home at 262 Huntsknecht Road, our residential area will become a commercial area, and we do not want that to happen. Approving this tourist home will clear the way for multiple tourist homes, which will damage the value of life that we have in Pecosa City and take down the value of our properties. In our opinion, they started a hotel without permission, and now they want to ask for forgiveness and approval to continue to operate their hotel. In addition to this, Mr. Hummel cut an extra entrance and exit from his property so his guests could use our private road that we maintain and own. I don't think any of our city councilors or anybody on this commission, in fact, would want this to happen to their homes and families. We believe that introduction of a tourist home so close to our properties could entice criminals and undesirables to this neighborhood and ultimately to Pecosa. More and more cities are banning Airbnb, while Pecosa is considering this application to open our city to more Airbnbs. New York City is, I think, the later city to do what Airbnb has called a de facto ban. In other words, they're not, they're not welcome. This is an extract from the Online Guardian regarding New York's new legislation. Those living near short-term rentals complain that dwellings bring disruption to local communities, including noise, parties, and pollution. We respectfully ask the city of Pecosa to deny this application for a tourist home at 262 Huntsknecht Road. So that's from all the tenants, and then this is from my wife and I. To the Pecosa Planning Commission, we live in Pecosa for several reasons, but mainly because of the quiet neighborhoods, low crime rate, and small commercial areas. We see Pecosa as primarily a family city that is great, is a great place to bring up children in, in our case, grandchildren. We live in the residential area. We do not live anywhere near a commercial or industrial zone in Pecosa. If we wanted to live in a commercial area, we would have bought a property close to the city commercial area. If permission is granted to allow a tourist home or Airbnb at 262 Huntsknecht Road, our residential area will become a commercial area. Approving this tourist home will clear the way for multiple tourist homes in Pecosa, which will degrade the value of life that we have in the Pecosa City and lower the value of our properties. Mr. and Mrs. Hummel have been operating an Airbnb from their residential property and home for, we think, about six months or more and are still doing so. We would respectfully ask the city to deny this application. Right now, we live and have a hotel next to our home. The building that they're using as Airbnb is an apartment above their garage. We have not been able to measure it accurately, but we estimate the garage to be about seven feet from our boundary and close to our house. The entrance to the apartment is not from the house, but from an exterior wooden stairway. This means that the guests have access to the property at any time and with anyone, and the owners have no control over the guests. We have 13 grandchildren, all of whom reside in Pecosa, so we have them at our home many times a week. In summer, they are in our garden and playing in our private road. We have never worried about their safety until the tourist home opened up next door to us. Now we, now we must be more cautious of whether there are strangers living next door to us that we do not know anything about. Added to this is that we have a granddaughter who was born with septo-optic dysplasia. I hope I pronounced that right. Where a portion of her brain has not developed and never will. I understand that there's, you have two parts to your brain, and there's a membrane in the middle, and this never grew, and also she has a one-inch tumor on her brain as well. She is almost five years old and cannot speak. She has impaired and limited vision, and obviously, she is not capable of looking after herself. We do not know who will be residing next to our house, or who may harm her, or any of our other grandchildren. The guests have access to their dock, which is again about seven feet from our boundary, and we have counted up to eight persons on the dock, and none of them were the owners of the property. We have smelled weed being smoked on the dock as well. We respectfully ask that the city of Pecosa deny this application for tourist home at 262 Huntsknecht Road. I hope you all understood my English, but at least it was written down with some spelling errors, which I apologize. Has anybody got any questions or anything to ask me?
At some point, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening. My name is Bodhi Hummel. I'm the owner of 262 Huntsknecht Road. My wife, she said that we did research around the area to make sure that we could deal and operate Airbnb here, short-term rental. I think there's a copy of the original business application that we put in. I believe it was in '22, possibly late '21, that states that we were requesting to go and operate a short-term rental out of that location. So we thought that we were following all the rules and guidelines put forth by the city, and I did have a disagreement with my neighbors, and that's ultimately what led me to come down and pursue to go and do the conditional use application for the property. I was away on deployment. When I was gone, when the neighbors got upset that we were, the guests were using their private road. Since then, I have blocked it off so that they cannot access the private road. Right now, it's a temporary barrier, but I will put up something that is permanent, so it is impossible for anybody to go and access that private road, and they will only utilize the driveway that bisects my property. I have since gone and renewed my business license with the same title application for the same use of that property. I will do everything that I can to go and follow all rules set forth by this council in the city, and I don't want to go and make my neighbors feel insecure, and I understand that they are. It is scary having strangers come into town. Airbnb severely vets all of their applicants that go and use it, so people who have criminal backgrounds can't go and rent from other people. They protect people's property. My wife has allowed people to have their family members come and see them at our property because they have family here in Pecosa, and they want to have them be able to come over. And they've stayed for a few hours, and they enjoyed our dock. The people aren't going and walking around the private road. My wife gets very specific instructions that they need to stay within the confines of our property. Yeah. So we're going to do everything we can to follow every rule that is set forth and make sure that our property is secure and that we are respecting our neighbors. Now, a short-term rental for us has been very beneficial. I've had other properties, and I have rented them. And, you know, right now is a good time to rent, but if somebody doesn't want to go and leave your property and move out, it can take up to six to 12 months to go and get that person evicted from your property. They might owe you six to 12 months of rent, but you probably are not going to ever go and see that money back. Airbnb short-term rental guarantees that we go and, that we get paid, and that taxes are paid to the city and the state. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I will be sitting next to my wife. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Hummel a question?
Sure.
When Thomas gets the picture back up, I have a question for you. So the, the private road that has sparked a bit of an issue, can you show me which one, which part is that?
Yes, as you look at it, Barbara Lane heads directly next adjacent to my property, it's going to be the left-hand side of that blue line.
Okay.
This is the private.
That's the private drive.
This is the extension of the private road you're referencing. But you can see here, there's a right-hand turn that leads onto his driveway.
And that is the public road? That's Barbara Lane?
There's no public street back there. It's all private.
All private, okay. So there's no issue with the access from the new entry? It's when guests were using?
Yes, they were, they were driving down the private drive. I made it access directly to the building off that private drive. I did not ask my neighbors, and that was disrespectful of me. I tried to get it to be part of the maintenance agreement for that road, and I had an altercation with one of my neighbors over it, because I didn't ask, and that was disrespectful of me to them.
If K. Brett Clark sends then know to know what a rice worm would be bought sight unseen with these conditions, we assumed that our son could ride his bike and be on that private lane.
Could you, sorry, if you come to the microphone, then everyone can help.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm familiar with the property. Is there a maintenance agreement? I know the property turns and goes down to Timber Lane, and this goes straight into the private property. Is there a maintenance agreement for that section of the private road? And when you purchased this property, were you a party to that maintenance agreement?
The, where it turns or the one that's adjacent?
The one that's adjacent to you that goes down, that the folks that live at 248, I think it is, right above you?
No, I was, I was not. The last time, I think, somebody was signed up with a maintenance agreement on that part of the road was in 1988.
Where was your driveway prior to you building this new one?
When I purchased the home, we've had a driveway that went right down the center of my property, right there.
That's where your original driveway has been then?
That is where my original.
Oh, okay. So you never had a deed right away to that private road?
No, never did. Any more questions?
If we do, we'll call you back.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, do I have anyone else that wants to come during the public hearing and speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will take it into consideration. And right off, something that really strikes me strange about this, I would like to ask about it. These folks, the Hummels, have gotten business license renewed. I'm puzzled by that because it's not a commercial area or not a business district. But to me, getting a business license denotes that it is, and to have a business license in your home, in an area that's not a business or a commercial area, do you have to consult and send letters to the adjacent neighbors?
That's a great question. This particular, the original that Mr. Hummel referenced, I believe was submitted in March of '21. And, you know, we have a large number of home occupations and home business permits. Well, we're changing it to home occupation, but we issue business permits for the home occupations. The commissioner of the revenue's office, does that function? And this, I will admittedly say, came in when short-term rental was barely new use, new to localities, certainly new to our staff. It was issued in 2021, reissued in 2022, I believe, and recently. We have a process between our commissioner's office and our office, where if their staff feels that when they receive an application for a home, for a business application for a home occupation use, that if it's realized that it'll create traffic, or noise, or distraction, then they will require them to fill out what we call a long form, just a more extensive application for home business use. That form that comes to our office, the long form, and adjacent neighbors have to be notified. Right now, they're notified and asked for signature by the applicant. In the changes proposed tonight, we will eventually assume the duty in those situations of notifying adjacents. Not in those situations, the short form is issued, and a business permit is issued. A business permit was issued for this in 2021, probably before it became more prevalent and better understood. And for uses that don't generate complaint or generate traffic, you know, we don't overanalyze in this, you know, in the building, aided by the commissioner's office. And typically, it just comes to us when, you know, it's realized that it may have impact to adjacent property owners.
We really, when it came to you, more looking at the impact as far as like traffic and not, I mean, just like an overview.
It would come, it would, at the time, no. They were not notified.
Because it was just a short form and the license issued for the business.
Okay, well, that's a problem. That's a problem, that they weren't notified.
Right.
That's a problem.
And of course, now that we are refining the process and better understand short-term rentals, the implications for adjacent property owners, the process of now, of course, is the extreme of just going to the commissioner's offices and getting your business license. It is a CUP, which comes to you all, and obviously is approved or denied by council.
Especially in the residential areas.
Right.
I mean, it's our, business district.
And it's our, you know, it's our intention that that process carry through until the state tells us we can't. And so that all of, all short-term rental applications will come to you all and ultimately counsel for consideration.
I have a concern because there are numerous investors in the marketplace today who are buying up blocks of parcels for Airbnb, not necessarily adjacent to one another. So my mind goes back to legacy, for instance, and I'm an investor, and I have tons of money, and I go in and I buy five townhouses side by side, and I want them all to be Airbnbs. And I know it's got to have a CUP, and obviously, we're going to have objections to that. So how do you, you know, how do you decide, well, this one is okay, but this one is not okay? And I think when you live in a residential neighborhood, that you have, and with zoning that we have, that the expectation is that it will not become a multifamily use. And so that's my biggest concern. Unfortunately, I think that these folks maybe were misled in, not necessarily intentionally, as to whether or not this property was approved as an Airbnb. Clearly, it was not, it was an unpermitted use. And so, and I feel, you know, I'm sorry for that, because I think that's what they were searching for, was something that they could, in fact, run an Airbnb, because obviously, they've had numerous properties in the past and have been very successful at it. But I do think that as a residential property owner, I would have the expectation that my neighbor is not going to have a multi-use property. That's just, that's just.
I have a question about the permit that was issued, not only in 2021, but 2022. Is this an annual permit?
It's an, it's an annual permit that's issued on, issued and reissued on an annual basis.
When does this present permit expire?
March of 2024.
March.
March of 2024? So it's, yeah, it's next, well, if it was issued in 2022?
It was issued originally in March of '21.
Prior to their purchase then? Because they didn't purchase until '22.
Or maybe, may have.
March of 2022.
March of 2022.
All this approval and all the things that why we purchased was in the 2021.
Well, you're, the transfer shows 2022, that's why I asked.
Yeah, when we physically arrived here, I came down and met the people I'd been talking with on the phone and did all that in March of 2021.
They closed in 2022, but you had made the application in '21? Is that what I'm hearing? It closed in 2022, but you had made the application in 21, is that what I'm hearing? Part of actually owning the property. Part of actually owning the property, you made an application?
No, that's just when I went through all the steps and I talked with Ken Summersett, I'm not sure who he is. But I did multiple emails with him in our realtor prior to our purchase and all that was said and so on. And once we arrived in March of 2022, is when I physically was able to.
Right. No, I understand the predict, I mean, I understand exactly how it unfolded. And unfortunately, I think you were misled, quite frankly. I think that somebody didn't do their homework to determine that it was, in fact, an unpermitted use.
The Commissioner Revenue's office issues this. It's, to me, a little disturbing that that is issued from that office without any, what are the, what are the, what are the checks on that? Who does that? All right, say, for instance, if there are complaints, Commissioner Revenue has issued a permit that seems to me, there's not too much guidelines to it.
I can tell you the process has been basically, as I mentioned earlier. They receive and take the applications. And thankfully, our Commissioner is playing double duty tonight and is in our AV room. So if I misspeak, he can correct me. They receive the applications. Their staff has historically assessed them and made the initial determination on whether or not it warranted that long form or warranted planning and zoning review. I think it's accurate to say this was issued in error. And I can tell you that it is the first, not just first for short-term rental, first that we've had this situation where one was issued and probably should not have been in my two and a half years. We're human, we make mistakes. So we are actively working with the Commissioner and his office to refine the process so that more eyes see the applications. And we notify adjacents as necessary, if necessary, about a new use. And oftentimes, you know, the process generally, not this application specifically, when we receive a complaint about a home business, the first thing we do is go to the Commissioner and ask, do they have a home occupation license? Do they have a business permit? More times than not, when it's driven a complaint, they don't. And then we start the process and they get licensed and permit properly. In this situation, it didn't happen, but we are ensuring that it will move forward.
Madam Chair, if I may just elaborate a little bit on the situation. So what happens with the short form is there are about 10 conditions that they have to satisfy and that they do sign off on. It says there will not be, you know, extra traffic to the property. There will be no evidence of the business from the street. There will be no signage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we have been doing that for quite a number of years. Just to let you all know, we have about 400 small businesses, sole proprietorships that operate in residential areas right now, of which probably 350 of them, people don't even know they operate. So they do do that.
You're joking.
It is quite common. But we identified this problem a few months ago. I've actually started, I've started to write the language that we're going to use to ensure this doesn't happen anymore. We identified this problem, you know, in the last six, eight months or so because one of my deputies issued this, as we've always done, and it has never been a problem before. So now that we've identified the problem, we're taking the steps to ameliorate the situation. We've got some new language that we're going to share. We're going to make sure that we don't have this problem again, so just wanted to clarify that.
These people are not notified, though, these neighbors, were they not notified?
Only if they do the long form that Thomas mentioned.
Because I.
Certainly Airbnb. Because the neighbors shouldn't even know that the business is operating. When they sign that agreement, there should be no evidence of that business. So therefore, there wouldn't be a need to notify the adjacents because they shouldn't even know it's there.
You're talking about just a regular home business versus?
Yeah, a home business, right.
Absolutely. Airbnb is really changing the whole landscape on that.
I mean, some people grind coffee in their garages, they fix instruments in their room over, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So in that case, those things never rose to the level of us needing to get a zoning approval, planning approval, this kind of thing. So we just really did it to kind of expedite the process and, you know, make it less complicated for everybody. But like I said, we've got language that we're writing that we're going to share with the planning commission in the future. And actually, I already wrote the language. It's just a matter of us all agreeing on it and tweaking a little bit. And we'll be putting that in place in the next month or two.
We, the basis of what the Commissioner is getting at is, you know, the whole purpose of the home occupation and how we issue is basically, you know, assure us, give us information about your business that no one will know it's there. That's how we operate. That's how it's always, we've always operated in this city. And, you know, I think just this one specifically was a lot of unknowns. And it slipped through a couple hands, not just the Commissioner's office. So it was and has been an operation until recently when there were a couple complaints. And when Mr. Hummel made an application, like he said, you know, we had no compelling reason to proactively enforce. That's not how we operate. We're complaint-driven. And then, you know, when he made application is when I found out that he had a home occupation license. You know, he showed it to me then. So there was a few missteps in the situation. But, you know, the applicant is doing what we've asked and getting proper approval through this process or not. And, you know, the conditions you see in front of you are the conditions we've worked with the Hummels on.
What happens tonight if we, and I don't have a clue as to anybody up here is going to vote. And we're certainly only the recommending body. But what happens tonight if we, say, we, you know, we deny they have a business license until 2024? Is that correct?
I think it's probably a better question for the attorney.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what I like to know. Maybe we can get some direction.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I would tell you if they have a valid license to operate a business within the city, then they likely would have potential legal action against the city if the city chose to vote that without any.
So is it even proper for us to be taking this on? What have we?
From the planning commission's perspective, proper, I mean, Thomas is correct. There's a proper procedure in place that the Hummels have now taken that step. And as Commissioner Chris mentioned, there was some confusion with previous process for business licenses. And I understand that the planning commission's concerned about what steps were taken previously. But as we discussed tonight, the state doesn't even have like related to short-term rentals. So while Airbnb has been around for several years, localities, states, commonwealths, you know, laws aren't in place to relate to those. I mean, it's still a relatively new business and innovation happens. Legislation is slow.
We, this.
I have a question as to why this is not considered an accessory building.
Because it is connected to the home.
What's connecting it to really make it attached?
It's connected by a walkway and that trellis. And that's what our, right now, it's considered connected to the home.
Really? One of the things you talk about is zoning laws.
We're fixing that too.
Yeah, is that a covered walkway of Memorial 52 is the only thing that we'll consider as a connecting instrument now. Because right now, the trellis that Mr. Cannella mentioned earlier, you know.
All practical purposes is a detached structure.
Right, right.
It was built as a detached structure. And probably at some point in time, it was added, a walkway or something perhaps was added to make the two flow together.
But then again, they are considered attached. I want to make this clear. They are considered attached because they are obviously, it's an existing attached place under the current ordinance rules. But the revisions will change that, but it will not affect the Hummels.
I, what if we table this? They could potentially still operate until we get something that we can actually look at and say yes or no. Because this looks like it could go either way. And that's what I'm thinking right now, is that we table it. They can still operate because they got an operating license, but when it comes up with a code, then we can make a decision, a proper decision.
If I misspeak, I know the attorney will stop me in my tracks. The current business license is through March of '24.
Right.
I think it would be unfair of the city to not honor that. This situation is the continued operation thereof after March. It's already December. If you act on it tonight, it will go to cancel January 22nd. So, you know, we're close to the end of the expiration of license anyways. Regardless of, I'll say, how the initial permit was issued, the whole, the purpose of how home occupation licenses are granted in this city is that your use, your operation is not noticeable by your neighbors. The neighbors have made complaints. They know the operation exists. They see cars, visitors to the, so regardless, it's not a situation now that we know the operation, we know it exists, where it would be reissued without a conditional use permit.
Aside from all of that, my question is about the violation, the violation, the complaints. The complaints themselves that are impacting the neighbors. Is it because traffic, noise? Do we know what those complaints were?
You can, you can come up.
It sounds like they only have been aware for the past six months. We were told originally that neighbors would be sent some kind of letter prior to moving in, and that was what we were told. And so all our neighborhood is brand new. Nobody's been there more than two years. We're all newbies. There's one guy who came and was hysterical with me and made it clear that that road wasn't ours, which I was absolutely unaware of. Since then, we've paid for.
Ms. Hummel, if I may, Madam Chair, if you wish to have the public back to the podium, you may want to reopen the public hearing.
I think if they want to speak, we shall allow it.
She can reopen the public hearing.
I can reopen if that's wished, so.
Well, my question is more to you.
Okay.
If the complaints came into the city of Pecosa, not the neighbors, not when they knew about it, what were the specific complaints that made the city look into this application?
The complaints were the access that Mr. Hummel explained he created.
Correct.
That he's since taken matters to restrict. And one was regarding the use.
Okay.
It was this private drive. We're on two private drives. And the one, there was a big mud pit.